I'm showing five thirty, so we'll go ahead and convene the Wednesday, March twentieth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Ruth, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman Miller?
Here.
Vice Chairman York is absent. Commissioner Mandel?
Here.
Commissioner Salazar Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Commissioner Mottagi?
Here.
Commissioner Lerma?
Here.
Commissioner Hedrick is absent. Commissioner Budd?
Here.
We have a quorum to conduct the meeting.
Okay, moving on to item number two, public comment. Would you please read in the rules of decorum?
Thank you, Chairman. Citizens will be allowed to attend to make public comments in person at city planning commission meetings. The public is invited to speak on any agenda item and any other items that pertain to the planning commission. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you choose to speak during this period, you will not be allowed to speak again when the specific item is being considered in order of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody like to speak on any items not, or any matters not pertaining to any particular items? I see none, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment and move on to the approval of absences. We have one absence for Commissioner Mandel. Do we have a motion to approve that absence?
Motion to approve absence of Commissioner Mandel for three, six twenty-four.
Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the approval of minutes, same thing.
Motion approved minutes.
Our second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to consent, public hearing, discuss possible action, items A and B.
Good evening, Commissioners. Marco Roscoe with Development Services, Planner Three. I'll be reading into record consent items A and B. Starting off with A, time extensions. This is a second request for a twelve-month time extension for Shannon Estates, Unit thirteen. This is a final plat of sixty, sixty lots, ten point zero six acres located at North Chester Drive and Greenway Drive. Staff does recommend approval for this item. Moving on with the zoning, item B, consent. This is a zoning case for NASA and Saraj Fervenakian, and this is an OCL property. This is an ordinance residing property at or near eight oh one South Clarkwood Road from the FR Farm Rural District upon annexation to the RS four point five, single-family four point five district. Staff is recommending approval for this item as well, and staff can answer questions at this time.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Chairman, Mr. Budd is abstaining from the zoning case.
Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh, go ahead and sit this one out and we'll vote on the, the, or we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and vote on the plat extension and then you can sit out, so. But any general questions for Mark on, or staff on items two or three?
I have a question on the extension, not that I won't approve it, I was just curious because whenever it was first applied, it was applied for, or accepted was on July twenty-seven to twenty-two, and it was due because of, uh, that the applicant states construction has now, not yet been started pending city council approval. And so the one that he's asking for now is the same reason. Is there, is there a reason, is there something happening that the city is not able to move forward on this?
Yeah, I can answer that. Bray Whitmire Development Services, so the, the previous request, they were still working on the public improvements. Those have been since approved last time. Right now, the, uh, the pending item is back on the city because they have a reimbursement agreement involved, so they can't start construction until the reimbursement agreement is approved by, by the UDC. So there's five others that are in the same, or four others that are in the same boat that this one is. It's just they're not due for an extension yet, to include Caspian, Starlight, Azali Estates.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for staff on item number two only? I see none, so I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for item number two. If anybody would like to speak on item number two, please come forward. I see none. With that, if there's no other questions for staff, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve item two as presented by staff.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. See you later, Mike. Okay, since Mark's already read it into the record, um, does anybody have any questions for staff regarding item number three? I see none, so with that, I'll open up the public hearing for item number three, the zoning case. Would anybody like to speak on item number three? Okay, come on up. Just state your name and your address, and you can provide whatever comments you'd like to provide. And you have three minutes, and I'll give you one second.
We are neighboring owners on the north side. This is, uh, the Clarkwood Residential Development.
Correct.
Okay, um, I, I don't have any comments. I just, I'm interested in what's happening.
Okay.
I don't have any yes or no.
Well, technically, I can't really respond to you, but basically what's going on is, the property has not yet been annexed into the city of Corpus Christi. It's still outside the city limits, but it's common practice for a developer to request a zoning upon annexation for that property. And what they're asking for is a residential neighborhood, an RS four point five zoning, which means that houses must be situated on a minimum of forty-five hundred square foot individual lots. And so that's what you're looking forward to coming up soon.
Okay, so this is not in the city limits?
Not currently, but it will be probably very soon, yes. Yeah. But just because they annex into the city does not mean that you are annexed into the city. All, all annexation is voluntary.
Yeah, we're in the city already.
Oh, you are, okay. Alright, well hopefully that cleared it up. Okay.
Luke, did you have anything?
No.
Alright, so with that, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, item three is read.
Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the director's report.
I have old niece, I'm gonna sit that way, even keel as well.
Chair Commissioners? Just let him get out of detention real quick.
So again, Mike Dice, I'm the Assistant Director of Development Services. Al unfortunately could not be here tonight. This is a continuation of the briefings of impact fee, briefings that have been done to the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, or CAC. This briefing was done on November ninth. This will be a condensed version of that four-hour meeting. Hopefully, don't want to keep you four hours on a Wednesday night. But basically, in a nutshell, much like the other discussed and proposed impact fees, state law requires that service areas be determined. So part of the master plan, which was the initial stage, talks about land use and things of that area, and each potential impact fee has service area requirements. Transportation or roads, what we'll call them, is very specific under section three ninety-five of the Local Government Code. You can only have a service area no larger than six square miles. Go back to the last planning commission, we had one service area potentially proposed for drainage that covered, you know, almost the whole city. This, by definition, has to be this many service areas, so, uh, it makes it a little complicated. You do have a proposal of twenty-one service areas, again, laid out by state law, six square miles. Each of these service areas I have listed up there, as you see, the blue one is number one, that's the northwest one, and as you continue down with the island being twenty-one, is what we'll call it for now, is Padre Island Four. Just a reminder, service areas, when we talk about fees and projects, money collected in those areas stay in those areas. Money collected in those areas can only go to projects in those areas. When we talked about the Oso Basin for stormwater, you had a large amount of land that could get, you know, fees from different areas and, you know, attack a project on this side or attack a project on this side. With this particular requirement by the state, if I'm in Flower Bluff in seventeen, the money that's collected there can only be spent in that area. Just, that's just a quick reminder. So again, as alluded to, the projected growth over the years is what helps determine, and we'll have an algebra lesson here in a little bit, but that helps determine part of the equation that sets the fee. So when we did the master plans and land use assumptions, it laid out, um, what may or may not be developed in these areas. So specifically for this one, when you say rez one, that's a single-family home. When you say rez two, that's anything other than a single-family home, predominantly apartments. Non-residential one, non-residential two, non-residential three, that's a breakout of commercial. So what this does is this shows you a difference between projected growth over the full ten years for those particular types of uses. With that, specifically, you look at, um, increase of vehicle travel as it relates to that particular use. Obviously, like any other, um, you know, you have a high, um, high-density retail strip center, you're gonna have a lot more travel and vehicle travel per mile than you would, you know, a residential neighborhood of half-acre lots. And so that, that's all laid out. Again, the consultant did that through the master plan and land use assumptions, and that, again, determines the upcoming algebra lesson. So again, with that, like the stormwater, now stormwater only had five projects. This has a number of projects throughout each of those service areas. So again, you have twenty-one service areas. Almost all of them have projects through different types of, um, street classifications. These classifications at the top are C ones, which are, you know, your smaller roads into, say, a neighborhood, smaller traveled roads to your A threes, which are more like Saratoga, your bigger six-lane type roads. Predominantly, A threes are done through bond projects, um, rather than a C one, which is normally done by a developer. So what this does is, with these projects and proposed projects adopted through council and CAC, it came to a total valuation of one point five billion over the ten-year for max growth. And here's our algebra lesson. I know everybody's freaking out. Eighth grade has come back to haunt you. So the way that this is figured, and again, this is laid out through three ninety-five, is you take the, the less cost revenue credit over your vehicle miles traveled, times the vehicle miles traveled, divided by the service unit, the development unit, and that equals your dollar amount per unit. So what we have below is in comparisons to other cities, the single-family dwelling, as you look down, we're at the bottom. And again, this is all based upon the land use and, and projects that are associated with that land use on that previous slide. So as we move through, you have different varying levels, um, for that fee. Again, that's entered through here, and then we'll talk about the fees in these next slides. For single-family. Well, not highest in the state, highest of these. We wanted to be similar-sized because, you know, normally, we always say, hey, we want to compare ourselves to the top eight. Well, you know, if we compare ourselves to Houston for vehicle miles traveled, I mean, it takes an hour to get to another side of Houston, so, uh, these are more specific to size. You know, Arlington is a little bit above us. Portland, we always have in here because that's our nearest neighbor that just got impact fees. Port Aransas, obviously, is a neighbor, but, uh, that's what's listed there. So option one, excuse me, this is full project build-out, including covering all C one through A threes. Again, broken down by service area, broken down by cost per mile, and then these would be your fees at cost per mile. Now, this is full capital improvement project at a ninety-ten split, ten percent developer, ninety percent city. And I know the spreadsheets are sometimes hard to look at, but, um, all of these presentations are online. The full presentation is on our website. Again, same thing, if you forecast on option one, sorry, this is a PDF, I want to make sure I get everything in focus. So option one is you look at potential revenue over the ten years at max build-out. You're looking at sixty-three million dollars on six hundred and thirty million dollars of potential cost growth. So again, that's that ninety-ten split, so you could raise potentially sixty-three. Now, option two is if you were to take out A threes, again, those are those larger Saratogas of the world that a developer doesn't build anyway, so if you took that out of the equation because they don't build it, it's not really, they're not building an impact because they're not building those roads, that actually lowers the fee. So as an example, from option one to option two, the option one was seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, drops it a hundred and twenty-two dollars for, uh, the average, so on and so forth. The retail goes from thirty-six hundred to three thousand, so there's a six hundred dollar difference. And again, that's eliminating the A threes in the calculation. With that, it also decreases the CIP from one point five seven to one point one seven. So just eliminating A threes drops the CIP four hundred million. So option three is the recommended option from the consultant. This actually eliminates C ones and A threes from the equation. This decreases from one point five seven ultimate build-out, all things included, to just under nine hundred million. So it's a pretty substantial drop, and again, the reduction on average, again, for that single family is twelve, twelve hundred, sorry, can't even read it, twelve hundred. That drops it by half from the full build-out option one. Retail, the same thing, drops it from thirty-six hundred to twenty-two hundred. And again, those A threes are never built by a developer, and the C one are normally included as part of that development. So with that, the consultant is recommending that we adopt a transportation impact fee with that ninety-ten split, the ninety percent revenue credit, eliminate A threes and C ones, um, from the, um, calculation. And again, restricting fees from funding intersection improvements strictly like signaling and things like that, and focus more on the interaction between those types of street improvements. And that's it in a nutshell.
Questions for staff? For Mike?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to see if you could explain the whole credit process to me, because I don't think I can get my brain wrapped around that just yet.
So credit can be multiple ways. So if, the easiest is if I build it and it's on the master plan, and I, full expense on, on my dollar, my tab, I can get a credit for all those impact fees that would need to be paid. If I was doing a thousand lots, and we'll just say for this discussion, easy math, it was a dollar per lot, I'd have a thousand dollars that I would have to pay in impact fees. If I built a road and it cost me twelve hundred dollars, then I'm over that ninety-ten split, and you could get credit for those thousand lots, because now you're, you're actually putting the skin in the game to get that credit back. There are also ways to do developer agreements with the, um, managing department, be it CCW, Public Works, whatever it may be, to get credits back as part of a development, so you can negotiate, hey, if I build this, I can get this. And that's allowed under three ninety-five. So there's, there's a couple of ways to skin the cat on credits, and you can do either, like a tangible credit that I can carry with me, or you can do a dollar credit. On the twenty-eighth, we'll be presenting some examples, SAWs, having developed in San Antonio recently. SAWs does theirs as a dollar amount, so if I pay half a million dollars in impact fees, what they'll do is they'll put that in an account. I mean, if I have a million, half a million dollars in impact fee credits, they'll put that in an account. If I have another job within that service area, you can just take directly out of your account first to cover any fees you may have. You can sell a dollar-to-dollar fee if you want to someone else, or if it's a tangible, like one-to-one. That's also your account you can sell, but they manage it more like an escrow, so there's, there's a lot of different ways that it, it can be managed.
Would there be a situation where a developer, or maybe a small developer, somebody else would have credits in hand that they can't do anything with? Like they can't physically sell them, nobody, there's no buyers out there, or they just, is it just a credit that's?
That's one of the complications with this many service areas. If I'm developing in service area thirteen, that credit can only be used in service area thirteen. If you've hit full build-out, or there's not anything potentially available, or you don't own any of the land, and you don't own anybody that's going to develop, there is that potential.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I was.
Yeah, so, and again, the credits, as you move across the four potentials, uh, stormwater, roads, wastewater and water, again, it's all based on service area. That's why the, we're the first to admit, this is complicated when it comes to roads. You know, the cities that we provided do have a road impact fee. Uh, there are some cities, San Antonio doesn't have a road impact fee. City of Lubbock adopted one, but they adopted it at zero. The reason they would do that is they could go back later and amend it, rather than have to not. If they don't adopt it, they have to go back through the whole process, which ours has taken four years. So there, there are different ways to look at it. Some people have, have mentioned about having the same fee across all service areas, but that doesn't fix the problem of it only spends in that area. You have, you have a stagnant fee across, but again, if you're in fifteen, you can only spend it in fifteen. And it has to be on a project in fifteen. If you have a credit, it can only utilize it in fifteen.
The, the service area, obviously, the drainage service area map is much fewer service areas. Does the, uh, does the water and wastewater look like that, or?
So roads are limited to city limits only, so that's one reason it looks a lot skinnier than the way, the stormwater which came out. So water and wastewater can also go outside the city limits. But the service area, um, requirement is specific to roads. It's gotta be six square miles, no bigger. That's why you have these patchwork of service areas.
For water, for instance, and we saw a lot of this whenever the new water towers came online, right? Turn them on, all the old infrastructure exploded and had to, you know.
Somebody should have called a plumber. They would have told you, get a pressure-reducing valve.
Right.
Take care of it.
Figure out how to, you know, choke down the, the flow and repair whatever infrastructure, but so, let's say you have a new development, you know, just outside of that, and it crosses over a service area line. So the new development requires repairs done just over, you know.
State law is very specific. It has to be in your service area. So when you talk about water and wastewater, water's easy. There's two service areas. There's everybody and the island. And that's because there's two service planes, there's two water pressure planes. The, the wastewater is six, and it's based on each water, uh, east, uh, waste treatment plant. So we have six plants, we have six service areas. So if you're in the area that services from Greenwood, and Greenwood is having a problem, the impact fees that are in that area can be spent on Greenwood's capacity, like creating more capacity. As long as it's developer-related or development-related, at that point, the impact fee can cover that. It doesn't cover maintenance. It doesn't cover, you know, your, your everyday operating expenses.
But if you had to upsize a line or something somewhere else?
It can only be in that service area.
And then, uh, that makes sense on the, on the wastewater side of things. I think it's gonna be problematic on water, maybe, maybe. But like, uh, so I live in service area ten, right?
Well, you, remember, and, and for this discussion, this is strictly roads. Water, there's only two service areas.
I'm talking about roads.
Okay.
Obviously, Alameda and the, you know, expansion projects with regards to Alameda that were in the, the, um, CIP master plan, um, those would be bond projects, correct?
More than likely.
And then, but like, um, what, what is Santa Fe classified as?
I don't have that info with me. Um, any guess?
Okay, so Santa Fe being a C one, um, in a service area that's, that sees very little development, and Santa Fe desperately needing a reconstruction, which I would think would be more than, more expensive than a, than a fresh C one.
Well, it, again, we'll use that example, and I don't know how far down the Alexa is. Is the Alexa in this area, the new apartment complex?
Alexa's kind of midway in that, in that ten, I would imagine.
Well, let's just say for argument's sake, the Alexa is just over this line.
Right.
If the Alexa came in after an impact fee, they would pay an impact fee per EDU, which is per unit. And that impact fee, if the Alexa impacts travel in that area, which it would, because there's never been anything there, you could utilize that impact fee for an upgrade to that road, not maintenance, but it would have to be an upgrade.
But the Alexa's already built.
No, I'm just saying, if, if it were after the fact.
Alright, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't retroactively coming in.
No, you can't do that either.
Yeah.
Makes clear, no retroactive. That's why, let's just say, impact fee passes council. We'll have a ton of plats, you know, if it goes effective June first of twenty-five, I guarantee on May thirty-first, we'll have fifty plat applications in.
Right.
But that's, that's normal. That's what every other city goes through, code changes, any changes to stuff like that, because your impact fee is based on your plat date, plus you.
Yeah, okay.
But again, there, the, having this many service areas, the advantage is you can carve out certain things. So like, let's say eight, say the city wants to propose, um, incentives to grow. They can adopt zero impact fees on eight. Uh, you could adopt it on nine. Wherever, again, it's up to council on what they want to determine, what is a growth area or incentive area that they want to do. Some cities incentivize their downtown districts to not have impact fees to help, um, promote downtown growth. Now, if you had an impact fee, you could also do that, uh, like a waiver through a developer agreement or some sort of incentive package, again, through council, but, but most cities, if they've got a target area, will eliminate the fee in that area.
But if you have an area town that is for sure in real rough shape, and for sure is not going to see any additional growth, how does this help?
Well, again, it doesn't, it's not the silver bullet, it's not gonna Well, again, it doesn't, it's not the silver bullet, it's not gonna be the, the magic key to fix seventy years of disrepair of, of roads. The main thing about an impact fee is it's, it's addressing the, the slough roads of the world, where everything built around it, and slough road never got built, and then it was a bond project for seven or ten million dollars, or whatever it was. So those are the things that a slough road could have qualified, if, if there were impact fees at the time, you could have used some of that funding in that service area to apply to that job, because it was strictly developer related.
Right.
But how does it help, you know, area five, west side, lots of farm fields, not a lot of development? May not help it so much right now, but as things develop and start filling in those pockets, that's where it could, because you don't have any infrastructure in some of those areas. And as development occurs, if there is an impact fee, that can help supplement some of that. Like I said, with ultimate buildout, and this is a max number. I mean, potentially sixty-three million, and that's max fee, max number, this is, you know, to the nth degree, but even a ten percent share on a buildout like that is, is helpful for managing some of those projects and making sure that development that happens in, you know, these farther areas could potentially, you know, get those roads in place. And again, it's water, wastewater and stormwater are the same thing. You can spend those monies in that area to help alleviate what may be a problem flood-wise, which may be a problem, you know, if it's a master line for water or wastewater extending those. So that's what it's really there for. Again, I'll be the first to tell you, transportation is complicated just for the fact that roads require so many service areas. Because each one of those service areas will have, you know, their own account, it'll be managed individually, and it has to be, everything has to be spent, you know, perfect by state law, so it's complicated, but that's why we pay smart people to manage that stuff.
Do y'all have the manpower to manage them currently, or are you expecting to hire a team of people?
Well, I wouldn't say a team, I mean, other cities like Fort Worth have two people that manage their whole project, their whole impact fee program. I would foresee us, and I'm only guessing, most cities, when they adopt, there's a latency period between when council has an action and when it actually goes effective. So that would give us time to realize, oh, we need staff, we need this. But those are the things that we'll look at as we get closer to that vote. I mean, like I said, the easiest comparison is Fort Worth, they have all these fees and really just two people manage it.
Cool.
But again, all of our presentations are online, developing our future CC, Google it. CAC meeting is the twenty-eighth, next Thursday at eleven-thirty in this room. And then we're having another meeting, I believe, on the nineteenth, don't quote me on it, but the schedule is online as well. And then once CAC has the recommendations, as before, we'll do required public, public meetings, public hearings. We'll include the workshop like we did last time, but it'll only be a one-day workshop. And that workshop will include council, y'all, and CAC at the same meeting. That way, if you have any questions for the CAC members that have recommended something, they'll be there at the table. And that'll be at ABC, and I believe that's the twenty-first of May. Is it? Perfect, see, look at that memory. Make sure my wife is watching, have a good memory. See, it even comes up automatically. So these are the next two CAC meetings. After the CAC meeting, recommendation on that last one, we're gonna start some community engagement as we did for the master plans. Will be in each district. We'll have that workshop on the fifteenth of May, and that'll be at ABC, same room. It'll be wider this time, because we're gonna maneuver the tables a little differently. We'll set the public notices to simply just, hey, we're here to notice that in, within thirty days, there'll be a meeting to talk about potential impact fee adoption. Al will do a full brief to Planning Commission. And then, again, we're gonna do, to make sure that we have enough engagement, that we try to touch as many people as possible, we're gonna do a public hearing at night with council. And then we'll do the first reading, we'll do the standard first reading, second reading, but we want to do an additional meeting at night with council. That way, if people are there, they can voice concerns with council, if they have a, you know, a job or something, they couldn't get to the regular meeting at noon. So that's gonna be available as well, so that'll be July ninth, sixteenth and twenty-third. But all of this is on the website. Just hit attend meeting and then schedule, as well as, like I said, all of our old presentations are there. And plans and lots of fun reading.
So is CAC the, they're a recommending body?
Correct.
And are they, if they decide to recommend, impact fees not get implemented? That's just a recommendation, city council still has the final approval?
Ultimately, it's city council.
And does CAC set the actual fee amount as well, or recommend the fee amount as well? And but final decision is by city council?
Correct.
And, and Planning Commission is just, we're just listening, and we're not really making a recommendation or?
Again, with three ninety-five, Planning Commission's not part of the, the approval group. There are some cities that utilize Planning Commission as CAC. In this particular instance, it's not. We do want to brief y'all to make sure, and that's why, again, why we're coming to, I think we're at every meeting now briefing. But CAC will be the recommending body, they'll be there. Again, as an example, I bring up Lubbock, because I just did theirs last year. CAC recommended a certain fee, and Lubbock Council said, no, we don't want a fee on this, we adopted it zero, which may be an option. Ultimately, it's, it's council's approval, and they've got to approve it twice. And again, they may have reason for incentives, they may have reason for, you know, they, it may affect development, whatever it may be, but that's, that's why we want to have those workshops, that everybody's in the same room talking about it. And things they see, again, from the Planning Commission side, as you see development come through, you know, your Platts and stuff don't go to council, so it's really more of an open forum to really hash out those things. But, yeah, they'll, they'll give their recommendation, either yes, maybe, no. Let's just say, for instance, they recommend no impact fee, and council adopts no impact fee, at that point, CAC goes away. Because CAC's main charge through three ninety-five is to manage the impact fee program. Be it what its rate is, service areas, things like that, capital improvements as they change, that'll be part of a CAC discussion. But if there's no fee adopted, then CAC has no charge.
Okay, any other questions? One comment, I'm gonna read this from Ruth. Just make sure that y'all have submitted your financial disclosure documents on or before March twenty-ninth, because they will kick you off if you don't do it. And you can't do no changes anymore, so you gotta fully fill everything out and dig out your bank statements and all that fun stuff, so.
And I'll say thank you for your service. Yeah, that was free.
Everything we do is free. All right, well, if there's no other business, I'll adjourn the meeting.